Time to begin tonight's city council meeting for February 24th, 2025. Tonight's invocation will be led by Reverend Tim Dixon, or maybe Holly if Tim does not show up. And Ms. Tia, would you like to lead us in the pledge this evening?
Absolutely.
All right. At this time, we'll rise, if you're able, and silence your cell phones.
As we gather here today as members of council, we pray that we are ever mindful of opportunities to surrender our service to fellow citizens and to our community, keeping in mind always the enduring values of life exerting our efforts in those areas and on those things upon which future generations can build with confidence. Let us continue to strive to make a better world. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Ms. Atkins, can you please call the roll?
Mr. Archer.
Present.
Mr. Arthur.
Present.
Ms. Blau.
Here.
Ms. Holly.
Present.
Ms. Johnson.
Here.
Ms. Lehman.
Here.
Ms. Mount.
Here.
Ms. Rumball.
Here.
Mr. Sweeney.
Here.
Ms. Walling.
Present.
And Mr. Shockley.
Present. We do have a quorum. Item number three is the synopsis of the last meeting.
Move to adopt.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the synopsis is approved. Item number four is reports of the mayor. Mayor Farrell, good evening.
Good evening. How are you? Nice to see you all. I've got three items to report on today. The first is that our Huntington violent crime drug task force and the HPD SWAT team last week had a big drug bust on the 100 block of 8th Avenue and 300 block of West 9th. There is a Michigan-based drug trafficking unit operating in town and five people were arrested. Our heroic policemen were able to stop that particular crime, arrest five individuals where they had crack, cocaine, heroin, marijuana, and of course, guns and money. It's an ongoing investigation, so we should expect that there will be more, but I want to thank all of the members that participated in that that are helping keep the city safe. So, thank you Chief Watkins and your team. The second point is obviously there was a significant flooding last week. Tragically, many people died in eastern Kentucky and southern West Virginia. I am thankful that the many workers at the city helped keep us safe. That starts with our storm warning utility group that installed the flood wall. It doesn't happen every year, right? And they did a great job of putting it in and then also maintaining the pump stations through the holiday weekend that helped keep the waters out of the city. Also, special thanks to our public works department. After the flood from two weeks ago, they got hard to work to clear Four Pole Creek. They cleaned a lot of the debris out of the river, they cleaned around the bridges, removed the blockages, and their work in addition to the good Lord sparing us the worst of the rains enabled us to avoid the worst of what it could be. So I'm very thankful for all of what they did. The last point I want to make is about potholes. Let me assure you that members of each one of your city council districts have been in touch with me about potholes. And so I am well aware that the potholes have never been worse and that I'm to blame. And we are doing our best to get them filled. So our public works team, after the river crested, I believe on Tuesday, and then the snows came and they went out treating the roads, they then went back out to fill potholes. And so we have two crews working full-time using cold patch. If you're not aware, cold patch is used in the winter months to fill these things until the weather warms up and the asphalt plant opens where we can get the asphalt out to do it more appropriately. And so what I would ask you to tell all of your constituents that are concerned about potholes is to use the 311 app to let us know where they are. They can also do it on the website or call Public Works and let them know. And rest assured that we are doing our very best to get all of the potholes everywhere in Tamfield as quickly as possible. That's my report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. Item number five is the second reading of an ordinance. Ms. Atkins.
An ordinance of council amending, modifying, and reenacting Section 951.08, the codified ordinances of the City of Huntington as revised refuse collection.
Move to adopt.
Second.
We have a motion by Sarah Walling and a second by Hallie Lehman. Good evening.
Good evening, Scott Dameron, acting city attorney. The ordinance that you have before you reduces the amount of penalties charged for the late payment of refuse fee from 5% per quarter to 2% per quarter. Currently, if there's no payment on the refuse fee over the course of a year, the penalties would be approximately 21.5%, and they actually continue to accumulate over additional years. So, we don't want people to not pay for their services. However, the intention of a penalty is to encourage the prompt payment of fees. What we found is with this high penalty, people become unable to pay at all, so they just stop paying. We think that if we reduce the penalties to 8% per year, which is a reasonable amount, essentially the same amount that Supreme Court charges on interest on judgments, this will encourage people to pay their refuse fee more promptly. And I also would point out, for comparison purposes, I mentioned this earlier, the IRS charges 0.5% per month for additions to taxes, which are their penalties, and which is a total of 6% per year, and the IRS does not allow it to exceed 25% of the total unpaid amount under any circumstances, no matter how many years. So we wanted to bring it into line with what the state charges in interest, what the IRS charges in interest, and we think 8% is a reasonable amount to charge. Be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions for Mr. Dameron?
Thank you.
Anyone from the public? Committee report, please.
Public Works met and forward to council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Atkins, please call the roll.
Ms. Blau.
Yes.
Ms. Holly.
Yes.
Ms. Johnson.
Yes.
Ms. Lehman.
Yes.
Ms. Mount.
Yes.
Ms. Rumball.
Yes.
Mr. Sweeney.
Yes.
Ms. Walling.
Yes.
Mr. Archer.
Yes.
Mr. Arthur.
Yes.
And Mr. Shockley.
Yes. And the ordinance is approved. Item number six is a resolution 2025-R-11. Ms. Atkins.
A resolution of council confirming the appointment of Matt Woffel to the reasonable accommodation appeal board.
Move to adopt.
Second.
I have a motion by Teresa Johnson and a second by Sarah Walling. And can I have a committee report?
The Personnel Committee met and forward to council a favorable recommendation.
All right. Any questions of council? Anyone from the public? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the resolution is approved. Item number seven is a resolution 2025-R-13. Ms. Atkins.
A resolution of council authorizing the mayor to enter into a professional services contract with Exidium for cyber security.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Not sure who got the second. Was that you, Tia?
She made the motion.
I made the adopt.
Okay. I just heard that. Stacy. All right. Mr. Kasan Perkins, good evening.
Good evening. The 2025-R-13 is a council resolution to allow the mayor's office to continue the contract we signed last year for our Exidium cybersecurity platform, and we would like to just renew and continue using the platform.
Any questions? Any questions for Kasan? Anyone from the public? Can we have a committee report?
Administration and Finance met and voted to forward this to full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the resolution is approved. Item number eight is a resolution 2025-R-20. Ms. Atkins.
A resolution of council regarding a public hearing for the proposed creation of the Excise Tiff District and its proposed boundaries.
Move to adopt.
Second.
I have a motion by Tia and a second, Hallie.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Ms. Kathy Barnes, good evening.
Good evening, members of council. This resolution allows a public hearing to be established for the creation of the Excise Tiff District and its proposed boundary. So let me start with providing you with a little bit of background. The West Virginia Legislature allows counties and cities to seek legislation from our West Virginia Legislature to create, the proper name is the Economic Opportunity Development District, but it's commonly referred to as the Sales Tax District. Currently, there are five such districts within West Virginia, including South Charleston, Ohio County, Harrison County, Monongalia County, and Jefferson County. One of the first steps in this process is to establish a public hearing and 30 days' notice is required, and so this resolution tonight would establish the public hearing for March 24th at a city council meeting at 7:30. So what exactly is the district? So if approved by the West Virginia Legislature, this geographically defined area allows the city to retain a share of the increment or the increase of new sales tax revenue. It is important to note that this is not an increase in fees or taxes, it just redistributes the way the sales tax money is distributed. It also does not increase the sales tax. So currently, the sales tax in the City of Huntington is 7%. The state receives 6% of that, the city receives 1. The city would continue to receive the 1, but the increment within this district would be redistributed and a portion of that would come back to the city. The boundary. The boundary was identified based on where we believe there would be future investment, planned development that would be occurring. So the boundary extends what we are considering the East Gateway, so beginning at 31st Street on the eastern portion of Huntington, extending down 3rd and 5th Avenues, including the former ACF site, the former Flint site, including the 4th Avenue Innovation District and extending into the Central Business District. The use of funds. So the state of West Virginia will benefit by receiving 20% of the increment that is collected, which currently is estimated to be $21 million of new general fund sales tax revenue from businesses that currently do not exist. Additionally, there would be a benefit of new jobs, increased income tax revenue, as well as new retail activity. Our current pro forma projects that the sales tax district could potentially fund approximately 25 million of bonded projects and approximately 12 million of pay-as-you-go projects. It's important to note also that those projects have not been identified, although we do, as required in the application, need to identify potentially what projects could be used, and we've done that kind of in broad categories such as building improvements, streetscaping, roadway improvements, parking needs, site work for new development. But again, this governing body, as well as the administration, will have to decide and approve what those projects will be. Next steps. So tonight is the first part of this process. It's establishing the public hearing. There are multiple next steps. In upcoming meetings, this particular body will need to adopt a resolution allowing the administration to submit the application. The legislation would have to be approved by the West Virginia Legislature, as well as signed off by the governor. And following that, this body would have to enact an ordinance identifying what the projects, the eligible projects, would be. But before we can do any of that, we have to first establish the public hearing. So that's what we're asking your approval tonight, is to establish the public hearing for March 24th. And I do have a slide deck that we've prepared, and I'm going to leave that with the city clerk, and she can certainly pass that out to you all, so that you'll have that for the future. I'm happy to, I have John Stump here tonight, who is our legal counsel, and we're happy to answer any questions. Hopefully between the two of us, we'll be able to answer any questions you may have.
Right. Any questions for Ms. Barnes or Mr. Stump? All right. Anyone from the public? And the committee report?
Mr. Chair, the Planning and Zoning Committee met. Sorry, this is Admin and Finance, isn't it?
Yeah.
Okay. The Administration and Finance Committee met and voted to forward this to full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. I'm eager that two of you are trying to jump in and give a committee report. That's better than no one, right?
Right.
All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the resolution is approved. All right. And that concludes the regular portion of business for tonight's meeting. Item number nine is Good and Welfare from the public. Tonight is a time for you to speak, for us to listen. You have five minutes equally, and state your name and address for the record as you come up. And the first one I have is Snow.
Good evening. Good evening. My name is Reverend Oliver Snow. I live on Westview Avenue, and I would like to speak to you today on the issue of the homeless shelter in our community. There's a story in the Bible known as the Parable of the Persistent Widow. It is about a woman who is seeking justice, and what she is met with is a judge who is described within the story as neither fearing God nor caring what people think. The woman is forced to be persistent and annoying, and eventually, the judge relents, not due to his own compassion or desire for justice, but because he is annoyed and a bit afraid of what the woman may do in desperation if she keeps being denied. It has become increasingly obvious to me that many, though certainly not all, of the people in power, as well as many of the residents in my own community, do not fear God, nor do they care what people think. They are cruel, selfish, and care only about their own interests, and because of that, I am tired of trying to appeal to their compassion. It's obviously a losing battle, and as someone who has been persistently fighting that battle in some form for most of my adult life, I have decided to change my strategy. I am going to appeal to your selfishness, your worst instincts, your fear and your disgust and all of those guttural human emotions that so many of you value, because I am tired. There has been a consistent chatter about what to do about the homelessness problem in this area, spoken in a way where you would think these people were rats or cockroaches instead of your fellow West Virginians. West Virginians whom, in many cases, voted for the very government officials who are now deciding to take away their resources. There has also been talk of moving the homeless shelter away from downtown, namely, the low-barrier shelter. And I am here to tell you why this is a bad idea for you. All you people who complain without end about this problem, especially those of you in power, who have decided not to listen or represent your constituents if they do not have a house. Firstly, it is expensive. Ground has already been broken near the mission for the low-barrier shelter, and moving it will be more costly. Secondly, it will not solve the problem. All resources for homeless people are still downtown, they will still be here, still be there, and unless you want to spend all that taxpayer money to move all the homeless resources elsewhere, you're going to end up with the same problem. And you could just criminalize being poor, that's an option, and one I'm sure many people would love, since they seem to revel in their own cruelty. But just know that that is the most expensive option, since housing people in jail would be more expensive than enacting a permanent housing first program. So the choice is yours. You can do the right thing and help these people, which is also the less expensive thing, or you can continue to hurt both your fellow man and your own pocketbooks in order to satiate your own bestial instincts. You get to make this decision, but until you decide to do the right thing for everyone, I, like the persistent widow, will keep coming back, over and over again, until you are sick of me. And I will bring friends. So honestly, you really should just save yourselves the trouble. My friend Cass here has some data that we collected from the homeless population here, and I would recommend listening to him so that we could figure out how to best solve this problem. Thank you.
Thank you. Harley?
I'm short.
It's okay, you can pull it down.
Good evening. So I'll be completely honest, I had a more eloquent speech in mind, but frankly, I am on hour 26 without sleep. It's midterms at the university, and every time I put out one fire in my life, it feels like three more crop-ups, so you're getting me as I am, tired. And one of the things I am tired of is watching my unhoused neighbors suffer with no voice. My friend Reverend Snow has been organizing sack lunch hygiene product and warming supply outreaches for about two years now, and I am proud to say that I am another set of hands on that work. As part of that work, we conducted a survey of the folks down at the mission last month. Now, I'm not the best public speaker, but I am a fiend for spreadsheets, and so I am here to present in part our collected data. Now, I know it's a small sample size, we'd like to conduct further surveys in the future, but, and as an aside, since this is a decently sized sheet, I'd like to email it to the council, if that's quite all right. The short list of statistics I'd like to cover is this. Of our 14 respondents who agreed to have their data presented here publicly before you, only one reported a member of government or government hopeful even speaking to them in several election cycles. I think that needs to change, because these folks are our most vulnerable neighbors. They deserve a voice. Further, of the barriers to employment, we polled on transportation ranked highest at seven responses, followed by physical disability at three. Actually, I think it was four, but I miswrote. Most of these folks received services at the mission, 11 of 14. The same being true at Harmony House. 10 of 14 reported a loss of shelter due to both housing costs and a job loss or unemployment. Half report a lack of paperwork or transportation, and 8 out of 14 reported struggling with substances. Two individuals reported being homeless for over a decade. My point in bringing this to your attention is to push this point. These folks are not vermin. They are people, they are our neighbors, they are our brothers and sisters in Christ. These folks are struggling, and they deserve better. I am tired of trying to help folks as one person when the systemic support is not there. I am one man who has been homeless. I know what it feels like, and I implore you, genuinely, do not move the shelters, because it will only make their lives harder. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Monty Fowler. Good evening, sir.
Mr. Shockley. Monty Fowler, 625 South Terrace. New year, new issues. And no, I'm not here to speak about killing Bambi, that's for a future meeting. I'm here to speak about some concerns I have about the mayor's proposed budget. We all want safe streets, we all want a well-funded police department, we all want our potholes fixed, we all want our streets plowed when it snows. Those are basic things, but a city is not just the basics. A city has a lot of little tiny moving parts that together make this a really good place to live, work, raise your families, retire, yes. And those are some of the things that I'm afraid the mayor is selling short, because he wants to pare down, or in some cases, eliminate, the partnerships the city has had for a long time with places like our excellent public library system, our excellent public parks system, some of the things that are housed in the library, like the information and referral services. And I think it would really be a mistake on several levels for the city council to allow this to happen. Information and referral, you know, it's a couple of people, they're in a cubby hole up in the library on the third floor, I believe, they help an enormous number of people who literally have nowhere else to go, nobody else to turn to. They do it on a shoestring and to try to save money by reducing their funding would be cruel, unnecessary, and very shortsighted. Our libraries have benefited from regular council allocations, even though the city didn't have to do it. The city has done it, because you recognize that well-funded libraries are important to our quality of life. Same goes for the parks. I remember back when the city used to take care of Harris Riverfront Park. I'm glad the park, I'm glad the Park and Recreation District is doing it now, because I think they do a really good job. And I would just like to gently remind you all that there was another government body about a year and a half ago that made the same mistake. They saw a few nickels laying down there, they thought, "We're going to grab them. We're going to take the money that we don't have to really give the parks and the libraries, and we're going to keep it." And I think you all know how that turned out. I don't want to see this city make the same mistakes and go down that same road. We're talking about an infinitesimally small amount of the entire city budget for these groups that do so much. Let's keep letting them do their thing, and let's keep spending some of our taxpayer dollars to do that. Thank you.
Mr. Keck.
Thank you all. Josh Keck, 2903 Staunton Road. Good evening, council. I have some concerns over the city's social media accounts that I wanted to bring together. Under the new administration, things have changed a little bit. The accounts since January 1st, the Facebook and the Twitter, they've been kind of repurposed as more of a promotional tool for the mayor and for the Republican Party. It's kind of weird. I had a good conversation with the mayor before the meeting. This is just in the spirit that sunlight is the best disinfectant, so we're all still friends after this, okay? In 2024, the city's Facebook page posted 722 times, nearly two posts per day. Of those, only 29 of those posts mentioned Mayor Williams, or about 4% of all posts. This year in 2025, under the new communications director, the city has posted 70 times, which is about one and a quarter posts per day, so it's a significantly lesser amount of posts, and 29 of those have mentioned Mayor Farrell, the new mayor. So 29 this year to date, and 29 entirely for last year, we've gone from 4% of all posts mentioning the mayor to now 41% of all posts mentioning the mayor, which is a tenfold increase. So overall, communication has decreased substantially, and self-promotion has increased or skyrocketed. Now, quality over quantity, I'm not upset that it's like a lesser amount of posts, but it's every other post is a quote from the mayor or something that's got to be about the mayor. It needs to stop, it's just inappropriate. Some of these posts weren't even created by the city, they were lifted directly from the mayor's personal Twitter account. That's a problem for two reasons. The first problem is that it's when you screenshot a picture with text, screen readers cannot read that text, and so it's an accessibility issue. There are some rules from the Department of Justice coming down to municipalities about accessibility. I would expect a communications director who's earning a salary of $80,000 to understand digital accessibility. It doesn't seem to be the case, and that's a big problem. The bigger problem is that posting these personal Twitter account posts on the official Facebook page of the city is a violation of state code. It's Code 6B-2B-3 subsection C, which is a provision of the Ethics Act that says, and I'm paraphrasing, "A public agency's social media may not provide links or reference to a public official's personal social media." Now, that's happened five times on Facebook and 10 times over on Twitter. A few hours ago, that it was all corrected, though. Those retweets are now gone, the city's page now just reflects the actual text of what Mayor Farrell had on his Twitter. The screenshot pictures that are not accessible, those are all gone. So, good, I'm happy, that's good. Now, I've also noticed that the Campbell County Republican Executive Committee has a brand-new Facebook page. I know that's not the city's business, but I'm making it the city's business. Prior to this year, there were only two posts on this page. Since the start of the year, this page has posted 27 times, including reposting 11 of the City of Huntington's Facebook posts that promote Mayor Farrell. So we have another promotional page that just happened to start posting at the exact time Mayor Farrell and the new communications director took their positions here. Of these 11 posts reshared to the Republican Party's page, five of these have occurred within less than an hour of the original city's post, and mostly during business hours. The fastest on January 4th was a repost of Mayor Farrell's Twitter that was reposted on the Republican page just eight minutes later. So, who do you think is making those posts eight minutes later, during the day at 3:00? The worst example was on January 17th, when the mayor's personal Twitter account published a video that was produced by the city. So you have city-produced content posted on the mayor's personal- So, you have city-produced content posted on the mayor's personal page. Now, this video was reposted or re-uploaded to the city's Facebook two minutes later, so right on top of each other. On Twitter, it was only reposted to his personal account. It was never, it was never posted on the official account, it was only a repost. So, the issue there, there's a third part of this, which is that the Republican Party's page also reposted the city's video just twenty-one minutes after the city posted it. So, you've got a rapid triple posting of a city-produced video on a personal account, and then the official accounts, and then the partisan political accounts, all within about twenty-five minutes. So, to me, that's deliberate coordination. I think it's more likely that just one person is doing it all, that one person has access to all of those things. So, I think the facts speak for themselves, y'all should do your own fact-finding on this. All I'm really trying to get at is that the city's social media should be the primary distributor of official city content, not people's personal accounts. I want my city funds, my resources to go to city purposes, not to further somebody's personal accounts. Thank you all so much for your time.
Could you name an address for the record, please?
Coco Daniels, ten-sixty-six Cedar Crest Drive. I'm speaking on behalf of someone who's present here today but cannot speak. I want to start by saying that when we were fighting against the BOE for the parks and libraries, there was a point where I was very afraid that they would give just enough back to stop people from being outraged, but cut enough so that dissent of our parks and libraries would begin. Thankfully, Sacks got too big for his britches, and only, not only cut most of the funding, but added insult to injury by demanding workers work for free. So, we were able to get people to organize and to fight back. Our mayor here is not like that. He's old-school. He is doing a classic tactic of death by a thousand cuts. Death of a thousand cuts is insidious, because it's silent until the blood loss is so great, and soon all the programs that we love that make the city great are gone, and people are, before people are aware, that they can fight back. So, let's get into it. The animal shelter is getting its funds cutting in half. Here we are clutching pearls about homeless people, how are we gonna be when there are dogs roaming the streets? We also had this lovely photo of him and Carol Miller on the city's Facebook page with more vague promises and plans, but nothing specific on how he's going to help with the flooding issues. No transparency. This is especially interesting, given, since the agencies who deal with infrastructure are some that are getting cut. How is he going to help our infrastructure, something he claims is very important, by cutting them, and not being transparent? This leads to what he isn't cutting, which is just as important as what he is. During the budget, he spent time talking about several things on one slide: a legal team, the jail, the veteran homelessness program, and the police budget. Now, the firefighters were mentioned, but it was kind of just thrown in as an honorable mention, with most of the focus being on our brutality system. The cops have had their least things done to their budget. There's also a line at the bottom where they're getting ten new take-home vehicles per year as part of a plan, and I'm sure their gas will be paid for by that department as well, despite many police vehicles just sitting in a parking lot downtown. Two new shields per group, including SWAT, and every cop gets new armor plating, not just SWAT, but all of them. The vehicles here are the most egregious, but I bring up these other things and over the other issues, because it seems like the cops are being armed to go after our own civilians, and that's how the mayor is prioritizing the money. Your children will be facing the baton of the law very soon, and if not them, your grandchildren, if nothing is done to stop this. We already have several cases just within the last year, police brutality and negligence. And add to that fact that he really wants the cops to be armed, along with making sure the jails have been running, and he has legal counsel. Y'all, it doesn't paint a pretty picture for his plans for the homelessness, or for anyone for that matter. There is nothing in this budget to help with our people, but we know that the mayor has threatened funding for the city mission and several other service groups. If all you have is a hammer, then everything looks like a nail. What happens when all you have is a gun? Brutality, authoritarianism, doesn't it mean that everything's a target? Here's the kicker. All of this matters because he says, he says he wants people to come downtown and spend money, yet there's nothing being done about the housing crisis, which affects the issue. You all should care about this, because it deals with your children. They can't afford anything. Young adults are facing homelessness like never before. Our friend groups are filled with GoFundMe and Cash App donation drives, just trying to get through the month. Housing costs are out of control. I watched a cute little house get turned into a rental property in there where I lived in just a few months' time. The National Realtor Association released their data just a few weeks ago about how fewer and fewer houses are being sold to families now than ever before, and the median age of owners and buyers is increasing, older and older with each passing year. We have a housing crisis on her hand, on our hands, and they get to the point, and they got everyone up on the evil druggie propaganda to the point that y'all can't see the dead canary in the coal mine. I doubt that I even understand all of the issues. The death of a thousand cuts is insidious. Don't let them succeed. For one, let's, for let, once, let's put an end to this method of abuse to us and all of our fellow citizens. I stand before the city council, begging you to ask the hard questions when it's time for the budget to be discussed on March first. Thank you.
This concludes the public portion. We will start with members of council. We'll start down here with Mr. Arthur.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I just want to give a continued thanks on the help for our flooded victims down in Westmoreland from the City Works Department, as well as our mayor and staff. We also, Monday, had a Westmoreland Neighborhood Association meeting, at the mayor and his staff answered questions in group sessions. I thought that was very good for our entire neighborhood. It's things that we've got to do, and that way, they're not looking at one individual to ask these questions, too. They're talking to each individual department, and I think that helped tremendously. That's all I've got. Thank you all.
Ms. Mount. Mr. Archer.
I want to take this opportunity to publicly support Mayor Farrell's stance concerning the low-barrier shelter expansion at Huntington City Mission. This low-barrier expansion was discussed at length in the city council meeting in summer of 2024. I strongly agree with those who are against the expansion downtown, and believe it's not in the best interest of City Heights.
Ms. Lehman.
Yes. I would like to inform folks on how you can report a hate incident or a hate crime. I've seen a lot of hateful rhetoric online. You can report it to the FBI. It is tips.fbi.gov, or you can call one-eight-hundred-call-FBI, and you can remain anonymous. Hate has no home in our city, or in our state, or in our country, so I, for one, have been personally threatened before, and have had to make police reports, and also report it to our HPD officers. If you are afraid to do so by yourself, please contact me. I would be happy to either sit with you while you call, or if you have, want to have discussion with HPD. Also, I had the opportunity to go to Cicada Books and listen in to a Sunrise Huntington meeting, a group of young individuals in high school that are forming a group for environmental work, community cleanups. I think this is a great opportunity. I think us as community leaders should support these young folks in what they're doing, and however we can. I also would say that I do not support the moving of the low-barrier shelter. I was one of two council members that went to speak in favor of it being at the city mission. I think having it right downtown, next to food, clothing, and resources, is where it should be, unless the city's gonna pay for transportation or anything else to help individuals, and also, what other community is gonna host it, please, you know, say where else you would want it to be other than downtown. But yeah, thank you.
Mr. Swinney. Ms. Stacy Joe-Holly.
Yes, so tomorrow night, Tuesday, February twenty-fifth, at six-thirty PM, there will be a mult, like, three different neighborhood associations are having a meeting at the Methodist Church on Saltwood, Crossroads United Methodist Church, it's on Saltwell Road. So, if you are a part of the Arlington Park, Crossroads, or Gallagher Village, which is you, I believe, our fabulous mayor will be there to answer questions about public safety and other topics as well, and it's tomorrow night at six-thirty, so I would encourage everybody that lives in those three communities to come and attend.
Thank you. Ms. Linda Blaugh.
I would like to invite everyone from Hilon, District Eight, to come to the same type of meeting on Thursday, February twenty-seventh, at seven PM, at the Community of Grace United Methodist Church on the corner of Twenty-eighth Street and Third Avenue. The mayor will be there as well to answer questions, concerns from the neighbors. I would encourage everyone to please make an effort to be there and get your questions answered.
Ms. Teresa Johnson. Ms. Rumball.
Hello, everyone. Let's see. I'm very excited about our Saturday budget hearing, March first. Please come and attend and hear all of the justifications and discussion that will occur Saturday. Nine AM is the start. It's actually anticipated, what I've learned today, to only go from nine AM to about noon, and then there's a celebration of Women's History Month, which will be happening, I think, upstairs? Is that right?
Yes, ma'am.
In the auditorium. So, that will be the shortest budget hearing that I have ever attended. I found this interest, I found it interesting, but I'm also excited, I recognize that things can change, and sometimes change is good. The only thing that I want to make sure is that we still go through all of the numbers, and that everyone's questions are answered. That's the most important thing. But efficiency is really awesome. I do recognize and echo that we are living in very tumultuous times. I just saw in Parkersburg, two hundred people were laid off, federal employees, and when people think about their jobs, being at risk, it makes everybody a little scared, right? That type of uncertainty is not something that we want to have in our community. And when we think about budget cuts, which we'll be discussing on Saturday, to say, the animal shelter, or to the library, or to the parks, all of these things translate into potential loss of jobs. We're even talking about, I just learned today, that our micro grant funding, which city council members have traditionally had a few thousand dollars to allocate to their districts, has been suspended, though I would like to, more clarification on that, because it seems, it seems a little, little up in the air. But currently, in the budget, and I would support it, for next year, starting in July first, there's a suggestion of, we're gonna cut the micro grant funding completely, which is, has generally historically been under individual council members' purview, to distribute to, say, like, Little League programs, or new businesses opening up, or whatever. And I recognize that with all of the uncertainty that's happening on a federal level regarding the finances, if I, as a councilperson, don't have a micro grant fund to allocate to people, because the city is going to be losing millions of dollars in federal funding, if we have to give up our micro grant funding to make sure that the city is, is whole and still running, and people have their jobs, I'm okay with that. So, I want to remind us that, well, I don't think I have to remind you, I recognize that things are uncertain, people are stressed out, a lot of people have, are saying things like, "I feel hopeless. I don't know what to do. I'm angry, I'm frustrated." They feel like, like the world is pressing in on their shoulders, and they don't know what type of action to do to shrug off all of this uncertainty. And I want to remind us that we're all neighbors, and, and nothing's gonna take that away. We live beside one another, we care about one another, and we might have different opinions about who's our favorite person in DC, but that doesn't change how we should interact and respect and care for one another here. And we also need to address the uncertainty and the anxiety and the fears that our neighbors have, whether it's about our budget, or about what's going on in the world. If we can say to one another, "We've got your back, we're gonna take care of one another, no matter what happens," the response from Parkersburg's leadership and government was to, to mock the people who were expressing anxiety over losing their jobs. That's not what we would do, not here in Huntington. I don't think so. Right? We won America's best community, because we do care for each other. And that's the kind of thing I want to remind us, is that we're, we're all in this together. We might have different opinions about policies and priorities of spending, but that should not take away the fact that we are neighbors and friends, and we're here to live with one another, and to lift one another up. All right. And that's all I've got to say about that. Thank you so much.
Ms. Sarah Wallin.
Following on what Ms. Rumball said, you know, I think we all feel very heavy and very uncertain right now, and I know that that's very difficult. So, what I try to do when I feel burdened, or uncertain, or scared, is I try to think of, of things that I can do to sort of control my own world, right? And so, I wanted to offer everyone two practical solutions. The first, we've seen in practice here today, right? If you don't like what's going on, come and talk to us about it, because it's really, really important that we hear from the people who we represent what their concerns are, and what they want to see, and it's important to be reminded of all the different people that we represent, and that we don't just represent the people who voted for us. We need to hear both sides, and we need to listen to both sides. The other thing that I do, when I really just feel like there's nothing else I can do, I, I like to really refocus my efforts on what I always call direct service, right? So, you know, especially when we're having these conversations around homelessness, and around, you know, economic insecurity, and, and different things like that, I go and volunteer my time, because it really gives me a different perspective. It, it reminds me, first of all, how very, very fortunate I am, and I always say that I get more out of volunteering, that it's really one of the more selfish things that I do, because I just, I find it so rewarding, I like that interaction with people. But it, it also lets me hear and see those different perspectives from the people who often aren't or can't be in this room with us. It's very important, we always hear, "Meet people where they are. Meet people where they are. Learn how they got there. Learn what their story is," because everyone is, you know, someone's child or someone's parent, and, you know, I think, I, I highly doubt that there is one person here who has not had a friend or a family member struggle with poverty, with substance use disorder, with homelessness, and that's what I always think about, is, you know, which of, which of my friends' lives could have been saved if someone was willing to be compassionate, if someone was willing to stand up and, and talk to them, and get them the resources that they needed. So, I would just ask, you know, that we all keep that in mind. And then, on a much, much lighter note, if you do want to support some really good causes and have a lot of fun, there are two great family events going on this Saturday at, they're both at the Mountain Health Arena. First of all, the Junior League of Huntington, and the Cabal County School Foundation is hosting Hard Hats and Heroes. It's a bunch of really cool trucks, and your kids can, like, honk the horns and flash the lights, and learn how everything works. And then, also, at the arena, United Way is hosting their Super Saturday, which is, it's a resource fair, they've got some really fun activities, and, and you can just come out, bring your kids, have a really good time. It's all very affordable, and it all helps some really good causes. So, thank you.
Thank you. Yes, and this week, there was a time, at this point, about a year ago, I didn't know if my father would still be with us, but he is, and it'll be his eighty-sixth birthday, so want to give a shout-out to my dad. Happy eighty-six coming up this week, so. That's all I have. Motion to adjourn?
All right.
Thank you, guys. Have a great evening.